That's the Jeopardy song and I don't know.
I did that once.
Yeah, not for like next week it looked like.
I played it.
That was fun.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to study session of November twenty fifth. Mary, you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Aaron Esten.
Here.
Denny, there, Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sap.
Here.
Councilmember Klyers.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Tonight we have Police Chief Chris Costad and State Mayor Mark Vingler, who is at Sheriff's. What about Public Safety Grant? A public safety sales tax?
Yes, I'm going to start off, I'll be tagging him up because we, Chief and I have both been involved in some of the webinars and information that CGTC, the NWC has put out about the new legislation from House Bill twenty fifteen this past legislative session. I wanted to start. I. There we go. Just. Talking about public safety budget as we look across the city of shelter and services, just to give it context, this is a follow up from our September, I think twenty third study session when we're talking about the budget and you know, and a lot of discussions we had from back in May about levels of service and what council's expectations are as far as levels of service and and options to supplement or discuss how we, how we offer services across our general fund. Two of these major services or systems of services that we provide are public safety and then street and transportation services. I've lumped public safety kind of into, or look many of, many services the city provides in this public safety discussion just because they're intertwined, not only because of service we provide, but also because of funding. There's some, there's some connections with funding here, particularly the public safety sales tax that we have in place and the one that's available through twenty fifteen. So I just want to demonstrate kind of what public safety as we've outlined in the general fund here over the last couple of years and what's going into the twenty six budget. It looks like at the general fund, so you'll see I start with municipal court functions back in twenty twenty four. So I've got a column for twenty twenty four actuals. This is actually what we spent in that calendar year, not as of what we budgeted. The twenty five budget amount next to that, the next column, the twenty twenty five estimated expenditures amount. So that's as of the September financial status report. What we anticipate year in in these, in these departments and what we're budgeting for twenty twenty six. So it, for the purpose of this discussion and the House Bill twenty fifteen, municipal court services, police services, detention corrections, legal fees, including public defense and prosecution services. And then code enforcement services at the bottom, DCR and mobile integrated health programs would qualify at your services. Fire services wouldn't necessarily qualify under that, but there's a direct correlation with public safety and certainly the impact on our general, what fire services provide. So I'll just, unless you have any questions, I will skip over to the twenty twenty six budget where these, all of these departments are totaled in the bottom at just over ten million dollars. Next column, you'll see subtract ECR, MIHP. I took that out because those are grant funded at this point. So twenty twenty six, we're secure that we have grant funding for those services, but they could be supported if the grant funding isn't there with public safety sales tax funding, but for this purpose tonight, I took that, that out. That leaves us at about nine point seven million dollars, which from twenty twenty five budget to twenty twenty six budget is about a four hundred and five thousand dollar increase for all these services possible, minus the DCR and MAHP. So this just kind of gives you an idea of how our costs are escalating in certain places. We'll say, you know, municipal court costs are escalating. We've got a greater level of service that we're providing there. We got state, state laws that are dictating how we provide services now going to all digital or what our, or paperless services. We have escalating costs for employment costs, judges contract and things like that on the city and the police department. Maintaining a strong police force by, um, saving our current employees, adding services like a, another police officer in the coming year and then any other we have additional funds in there to cover Macecom expenses. Those increases as, as well as any other operating costs that we that have been determined for the next year, detention corrections, that budget remains the same from twenty twenty five as C twenty four was about half of what was budgeted. We're anticipating getting closer to that twenty five and by talking to the judge, our court arraignments are well over a hundred each week these days. So that means more people are going to enter detention corrections program. So we have carried over the twenty five budget to twenty six. Our legal expenses budgeted about twenty, excuse me, seventy, seventy six thousand over, over twenty twenty five. This is from public defense, prosecution, but also some of our general people fees too, as we adopt new codes and regulations. There's, there's a pretty significant amount of legal review that goes into that. Fire services, that's direct collection of what Central Mason Fire would collect if the city was annexed into the district. So their, their property allocation for our LA is transferred to them. We also paid for half, half of apparatus that, like ladder trucks that would serve the municipal like this. We have services for the building that required to provide and then the EMS levy that is allocated within the city of Sheldon property owners just transferred three MS services to Central Mason. Code enforcement services, one seventy one was budgeted in twenty five or anticipated, one seventy six, five approximately there. Animal control, two thirty five, up to two thirty nine and twenty twenty six and then get the DCR.
On legal, that's just going to get higher and higher over the years because of the Supreme Court ruling.
Yeah, our public, our public defense costs increase certainly, different by public defense, frankly. Yeah, I don't want to be glib about that, but it's, it's a reality that we're, we're, we're facing as, as other jurisdictions are are addressing those public event standards and, and case counts based on that point system. Luckily, we have a public defender that is, is local and has been providing these services around eight years, but but he has to maintain his staff as well. Able to play that circus. So it's a two-year contract. Frankly, I don't relish the time we have to go back out for for our paid services in the near future, but how competitive this is going to be in about salt jurisdictions, state of Washington. One AWC's legislative priorities is to continue to lobby the legislature for, for assistance down that, along those lines and whether it's addressing the, the case count or, or we're distributing some funds in number two, to help offset public defense or make a, you know, providing more incentives to get public vendors assistance. Turn chief here.
Wanted to give you the snapshots of the department currently, our stats and and our services that we are. Currently, we have only four positions. That's including the position that was just mentioned in six. Two administrative level positions, four sergeants, one of those is assigned to this division. So I have three control. One is totally out of my code or unknown period time. Three corporals, one is dedicated to detectives, two control. And we have eleven to take us by, but control officers and one. To those positions are vacant right now. We are anticipating filling one of those middle of next month. We're handling the hiring process for that one and we're currently reviewing applications and documents. Who may be interested in the vacancy that may be achieved within public services budget. So with our twenty four, the national average is two point four officers outside. Right now, what we need to say compared to twenty. So. And they can just leave the whole option. So there's no officers there. That's going to happen anytime soon, but that's, but up there. General statistics for this year compared to last year, and this is obviously just current to this day, lashes by another week ago. Some of these numbers are still a little bit elevated. They're pretty much on the bar. And from twenty point four to twenty point five, it's about another month and week to go or so. So these numbers are a little bit. Any questions on any of these statistics?
Why do you think felony arrests are down so much?
And that's a good question. And that, that will, that will be evaluated when we come to the end of year. Specifically, because you know, out there, you know, hard to say right now, but it's still have a month ago. So it'll definitely raise a little bit.
Yeah.
In March year.
And we'll look at specific felony cases, correct? Chase across from, from year to year.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So we'll compare apples to apples and we'll, we'll see exactly what's on, what, what was, what may contribute to those stats dropping.
Current flock, our flock system is running very well. We haven't had any issues with it. We're getting lots of hits from it as well as you can see we, in a thirty day basis, we get about right now, we were in about twelve for the last thirty days. And those hits mean that those vehicles are wanted for a number of reasons, you know, either they're stolen, the registered owner might have warrants for their arrest or their the vehicles wanted in connection with the dying of the persons that are registered owners of the vehicle may be wanted for, you know, a crime. So that it can vary on what the hits are. So it doesn't mean that we take action on all of these. It's just but the system is not even, there's a potential issue with this vehicle and the city. Case files thus far with the flock safety, safety system is fifty one since the implementation. You know, those whole variety of cases, you're talking stolen vehicles, stolen plates, warrants, and then thefts and then when detectives produce it. That's some inception view. Unable to solve some very serious crimes against children and some burglaries. So those employees is stable and valuable. Oh, and arrests. Yeah, we have approximately ten arrests, I think, to a lot of the buckets to sell. Public camping enforcement, we've gone out this very standard since the, the council approved this ordinance since we started addressing the size, we have issued eight citations, two in custody arrests and the forty eight hour notices that is in our in our implementation to help to address these issues. We have approximately forty of those numbers. So what I take from those numbers is most people are complying with our advisement that they need to go somewhere else. And we've only had to issue some patients or rest ten times. The official law contains all the, the camps that we have cleared so far. And the number of camps within those locations. So we have cleared. Fifteen or so camps so far and which the house one that we're doing right now is the, is the High Green Capital, that was just a major camp still in the city. So we're working with public works and trying to implement a game plan to, to get on that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
For the forty eight hour notices. So let's say you give them a forty eight hour notice. What is the rule? Because I've been told that people are just literally moving right next door, like moving a few feet away and just saying, oh, I moved.
Well, if you think when it really necessary, change anything with the forty eight hour notice, but if they moved substantially to a different location than that, potentially we set that depending on the distance, but if they just moved a few feet or a few yards, I would have to take that into compliance with the forty eight hour.
Okay.
Why do we have to wait forty eight hours?
That.
Yeah, that was an administrative policy. It gave us the opportunity to notice somebody so they could take their materials and, and supplies or garbage or whatever else with them. It gave us an opportunity to react to that too, because we're not able to react as quickly as we might be able to if we gave them a two hour notice or six hour notice or whatever that might be. It didn't allow that to comply. We would have many more citations, many more arrests. Way of burden on the police department or public works department at the same time. You, you run into, particularly with personal possessions, you run, we run to constitutional rights with search and seizure and, and personal possession. So we've given the, the individual the opportunity to take their possessions with them. Per the notice, anything left there at that point is considered garbage and we can dispose of it at that time. If they're there and that arrest is made, we have to take every belonging at that camp and go store it for sixty days, document it, store it, hold it and allow it, allow them to pick that up with a sixty day notice as well. So it alleviates some that we have to do at that time.
How often does that happen? That you have to, people don't do it and you have to move all that stuff. I mean. It's just, I'm.
Yeah, we, we moved several to properly from downtown area. We had a couple of public workers and they had to bring the flat and trailer. So we can load some of this property. So it happens quite a bit that we have to store this property.
I'm just curious, how many times did they actually come pick it up?
Yeah, and there's a complex about just a couple of days ago.
Okay.
I'm going on the front door saying, I want my property. Then we'll up there, then can you handle the tree property? Yeah, they bring the truck.
Would you say that's more common or less common?
It's probably less common.
Okay.
But it looks like about seventy five percent of people, when you tell them they need to leave for forty eight hours, you come back in forty eight hours and they're gone.
Yes. Yeah. Typically it's before forty eight hours.
Thank you.
I just want to run through other things that are, they, they always run in the background with us. These are things that we are. Tell them it adds on to their workload and all the, you know, other things we're trying to achieve. But one of the biggest things we're always doing throughout the year is training. We have state mandates. We have our policy mandates that fall within, you know, accreditation mandates. So for state mandate, it's twenty four hours a year, but with our accreditation mandates, we set up these trainings and, and any additional trainings that my officers or supervisors request. We typically, every, every individual officer, sergeant or detective, they probably get up to the gauvers of training, P T plus, some, some reason. Kind of training, you know, too. So we, we typically double what the state mandate is. So that's always ongoing. It's, it's always something on administrative duties. Again, we do a lot of internal training. There's a lot of checks and balances we have to do when we conduct our internal training with due to our accreditation standards. There's lots of, we want lots of documentation. You know, and then there's lots of internal audits and, and data integrity, you know. The thing about, and I've said this before, we are a small apartment, so there's no officer there that they're only not just all that's not, it's a little high department. They won't ask. What should be these. And community outreach programs, citizens academies is one of the big ones we just hit. We just completed the Spanish citizens academy that we did though. Come through the four weeks. And we, it was a great success. And most of the classes we had forty, fifty participants access and address issues that typically affect Hispanic, Latino, Latino and minority. And success, I, I can't hate to actually share some more results. I just, it just ended without, you know, that was something we just had. We also get a lot of them by spring school to show up and come do some presentations, talk to kids, read a book, you know, not, not a common in all. And again, we have community events throughout the year, Big and Forest Festival and at the weekend, we got the Christmas break coming. Friday nights. A shop that I call spectacular. So around there, we always have events that we have staff for, by, for, and then sure that can try to do those events as safe as possible. Traffic, traffic enforcement, we have lots of questions traffic enforcement. They come, a lot of them come for me. I get the phone calls. I get the emails from the community saying, hey, I've got a problem on your neighborhood and nothing's been, or my neighborhood and nothing's been done. I called to show up. There's none. They don't do anything. So then, you know, those are extra things I got to put out to my personnel, say, hey, on this, go, what do we look around about this? We don't see. Again, and that's the same thing that's proposed. But now like on vacation, they're having a great, great problem with something. Request us to buy a house every so often. And it's not that we can really facilitate all this all the time. It's not that we can do it, but I just wanted to show you how this is all coming in at us and how many requests for services we're getting. And again, the last one of us, it is. And this is not all inclusive. I'm sure this one, these are user main points and structure and market enforcement. Quite simply, they're usually in a year and have lots of issues. So we're showing a high school in the west of the party enforcement. So we're, we're trying to help them out, but we're only about where it was a public safety issue. We'll do that anywhere else to say we don't have resources. Public safety issues. Any more questions?
Back up. So as I mentioned, House Bill twenty fifteen established two opportunities to fund public safety services. There's a grant which is a, a three-year, one hundred million total grant program across the state for hiring, retaining, training new, new police officers, not laterals. These are entry level police officers and potentially co responders. That grant funding cycle started in July first, July first of this year. So it is already, it is already started and it, it's off and running. And then the one ten, one percent local sales tax that adds to local jurisdictions opportunity to institute that for, again, public safety, criminal justice needs. And there's, there's really like I said, the sales tax, it's a bit fodder of opportunities. You can you can fund services that may, like I said, MAHP co responder services, sorts of intend to reduce homelessness or substance abuse. It can be for defense or municipal court services, prosecution services, as well as directing your, your police department as well. As well as directing your police department as well. I will let Chief talk about these requirements, well, because there's there's there's. Requirements attached to to both of these um that has made it, I think. It's difficult to achieve um what the state has placed on 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 these these grants and and the sales tax, particularly the grants. Um there's not been one issue yet with jurisdiction, state of Washington.
There's been twenty applications submitted to C J T C, I went to the Waspe Compass. Go to um send them, bring this in and talk to the other agency leaders and and discuss. Um this grant option and. And when I know this time, there's been twenty applications submitted to C J T C, thirteen of them by. Several steps process, um so C J Chief says, it's not, it's not an end-all, if you get tonight, you just gotta keep working through the process. And and try to get um get approved and the the significant pickups with this grant right now. That are having an impact on uh agencies. We approved our policy requirements from the A G office, all the policies for keeping uh. Washington working type and use engaging use of force policy. And then the second huge caveat is uh training mandates. That are not state mandated, but now they're gonna be mandated on us as an agency to complete to. To be able to get this grant or this tax. So those are, those are the huge things that are stumbling blocks for us. Um and potentially for us, we have adopted a use of force policy, our our um. Our policy manuals managed by Lex and Paul, Lex Paul, policies provided by attorneys. That give us suggestions on how to help to help what kind of policies to to implement and then. They come out with um updates and recommendations and the latest, and yeah, this mandated by state or federal law. Or this is discretionary, or this is a best practice, we have different options when we all scroll in. And when he, when the A G's office is about to mostly accomplish, there's no amount of months. Specifically came up with a a new model, use of force policy, we did. Suggested us daily as. Uh state law, so we did mandate at those changes, however, I. And we still only, I'm not fully sure if our policy meets. The suggestions by C J T C for to be, I can guarantee you when it comes to keeping Washington works type that. Not followed by uh uh with the achievement policy model, we are, we. We have two policies we've earned K W W and and they're consistently with the values that that A G is. Putting out there and and what they're trying to accomplish, but from what I understand, but. What C J T C wants to see is they want to see almost the word, the word, the data adoption of the age of all. Which on uh which so far for K W W, it's not been vetted by Lex on their person, it's not suggested that way about. So we're running into, you know, what do we do then?
Those are some kind of roadblocks, you'll see, this slide talks about eligibility and so the. A, one of the public safety sales taxes must be adopted, be eligible to grant the city uh uh. Constituency of the, right, the residents voted for a public safety sales tax in the city shelter years ago. Um again, the grant's hundred million dollars, seventy-five percent of the salaries covered. Um through the grant, twenty-five percent is the local manager maximum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so there is. Some skin in the game, if you will, from the from the city of Sheldon, it expires in June of twenty twenty-eight. Um again, as Chief said, the policy and training requirements must be met to obtain the grant. The sales tax, you must qualify for the grant in order to let it sales tax, so as as Chief just said, there's some. Training requirements, policy requirements, again, that are uh necessary for the sales tax. It's capitalmatic in June twenty twenty-eight, it's one-ten to one percent, it is permanent, and then, like I said, broad use of public safety, so. Municipal court services, um legal defense, prosecution, uh co-responder programs, those types of things as well as. Uh stackable on top of existing public safety sales tax that we have. Um and that you don't have to play for that grant to make this. To be eligible for the the public safety sales tax, but again, you have to be. Order to adopt the sales tax. Clear as mud, right? Um this talks about, a little bit about the 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 sales tax opportunities that that are in place. In the um in the in the state of Washington, the middle one eighty-two fourteen four fifty is the one that the voters uh elected to adopt in the city of Sheldon, one-ten, one percent. Uh the yellow below, it's it's the one hundred possible twenty fifteen. And that's the existing under eighty-two fourteen four fifty, that's only. Public safety sales taxes appeal to cities, if the county adopted that at any point, it's a county share, as you'll see there, right now, city imposed revenue shows. County five percent, city fifty percent, county, if the county imposes it, it's six percent, and forty percent to the cities. That are incorporated within that county, the city of Sheldon is even equal to. Um here's some of those broad uses, um domestic violence services, other vendors and version programs, reentry work for inmates. Again, reducing kinds of certain poorly behaved health replacements, which is a, there's a. The outreach and cover stopper events and other services programs as well. With the public safety sales tax, um if you remember with the transportation benefit district, there's a, there's a certain timeline, you have to meet with an election. And notification to department of revenue, so department revenue needs seventy-five days notice prior to. Um the collection after after um that action is taken by the voter, by the council. But they will only start levying that sales tax on April one, July one, and January. So again, if it's April one, then um D R needs to be notified if I notify. By January sixteenth, if it's July one, you know, by by April seventeen or January first twenty-seven, by October six. Twenty-six. Next slide's talking about grants a little bit. Um this was kind of captured on uh three slides ago. More information.
The grant expires in June twenty twenty-eight, we're already six months into the grant phase. Um it's gonna, i- if we went down that route, it will take us. I would assume another six months maybe to get an approval, potentially, it depends on our timing. And then, but then we're having new new entry-level officer, which means now that the. Entry-level officer that we have to send them to the easy academy that will be trained. And then let's receive them back, you probably at best, at best, at a year and a year left on that grant with the new officer. And then what looking at, are we able to afford this officer after experience, there's.
Yeah, I think sustainability is is the major issue there with the grants. Uh make this commitment to an individual or multiple individuals that are hiring new and. Can we, as as the first slide demonstrated, we're already seeing. Of the increase from the twenty-five budget to the twenty-six budget for public safety. Can those those positions, that position be maintained long-term after the grant expires?
There's no indication from C J T C despite the 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 issues with people, we don't. The agencies again approve that we're getting extended.
I mean, can we even meet the requirements for the grant, you mean, so? Is it viewed or are we trying to figure out if we can?
Well, where's probably all the information you can, why do we can't meet all of the requirements for the for the um sales tax either at this point, right?
Right.
Yeah, so they they they're uh they both have to be met. And this this talks a little bit more about the training policies, um C J T C trainings, use of force policies. Use of force database.
What what are the hurdles? Uh it's, I mean, it sounds like there's a policy that Lexi Paul just hasn't vetted yet, and is there more than that?
Is there what?
Is there, are there other main areas or?
The policies are are a major hurdle that agencies are, yeah, there is the training, um the training mandates. Um you know, you have about five or six of the training mandates I located within. Application process, we are only doing two, um that's our annual C I T C training. And um the law enforcement can use safety act training, we are on part for that, but uh with. The new this H B twenty fifteen, there um is sexual assault, gender-based violence training that. Every single one of my officers have to go to, this is kind of state mandated one, but if now they have to go to that, and my detectives have to go to that as well. Um one issue with that is the ones that my detectives go to is a little bit more of a a robust. Um class and the next opening for them is March, um so.
And I'm assuming these are not free?
Uh I have not seen the cost associated with though that particular course yet. Um I have had, and usually it's displayed, I did not see one there.
Well, they're not here, aren't they there?
Usually charged.
They usually charge, yeah.
Usually we charge for contributions, sometimes depending on 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 the class, yeah, not. On on that specific treatment, so I cannot say for sure that there is a charge for that. And then there's annual K W W training for um every officer and um U N T visa trainees. Uh which literally they have nothing to do with, that's all, that all comes from all, I don't think that add that part, so. Um there's also one more issue and and and. Of an issue that we may not ever. They, we won't be able to fix on our end, and that's that's gonna be something C J's he sees him handle. Is in an arcade that definitely um policy in regards to consular notification. They're custom, within seventy, within seventy-two, two hours, they, the uh agency that's. As a known by customer that we have them, we don't hold anyone for seventy-two hours. This quality or basically can't be jailed with that, so that's up to them to put that in our policy, but yeah, we cannot. We cannot enforce, you know, what we need them to have, or it's a policy, that's up to them, and if they're not compliant with that. From C J T C would probably not rule us, and there is, I think, the legal trend coming down with this one, but yeah, literally, our answer is.
We can impose the policy on on the detention facilities that we're contracted with, so. It's it's up to them and uh certainly with with the squalling being being operated by the by the squalling tribe.
It's like a target, there's no way you can ever reach.
And and we, and that was kind of mentioned, maybe the whole world seems like it's just, you know, it's unattainable.
We'll give this to you, but you can't actually get it.
Questions, uh so the sales tax is council-matic for twenty twenty-eight, then the third. Bullet point says it's permanent, so.
You you, there's the window to adopt it through.
So there would be funding permanently, because we have the point one percent tax. Okay, so I just wanted to clear that up.
Sorry.
So there would be funding if available, if we wanted to use it that way. But if we wanted to divert it for a D C R or something else, then then we have to have find more money in the general fund. But general fund will be bolstered by the point one percent sales tax permanently. Therefore, we, so that's why it's.
Yeah, for eligible public safety purposes, as as we talked about before, certainly, um there's there's. The pu- all these public safety programs are are funded by the Jeff Fund, so if it's a service that we're providing now, it could be a street service. Right, um that that is not being, that's being funded now and not being funded now, and. This this additional revenue is bound to by public safety, those funds could be shifted into a street service or something else. D C R, our responder programs, whatever that might be, um by by collecting, because we have to report on these funds. And what they're collected and what they're spent on, um so we have to justify and communicate how these funds are being spent for public safety. As they're intended for within that.
But we're expecting hundreds of more units in the city to be built, so a greater population, so if we did not. In increase our number of officers on the force, then our ratio of officers to the citizens would. Get larger, smaller, I mean, so. Um but it sounds like we should wait for a better opportunity, I mean, because of all the. Hurdles we have to jump over, hoops we have to jump through. Well, I don't know, I would have.
I mean, I agree, we kept me the requirements, then. We kept me the requirements, unless you're saying that we can at some point, but.
I mean, we could endeavor to meet the requirements, I think we would need some some more traction for council, if that's certainly. Something you want to want to address, I think, right now, it's whether the grant would be appropriate or whether the the. Sales tax would be appropriate for us to do a little more research on. Refine, work with C J T C, because there's still some work going on over there, right? Uh and refine how how these training programs could be implemented in time to be eligible for these events, is there. Chief, is there a grace period at all to to meet those, you have to have all the training current in order?
You don't have to, from what I understand, you don't have to have the training current, you just have to have to have a plan and an agreement and with C J T C to be those.
Well, I mean, I'm going off of, off of, that he's a professional and listening to him talk, it doesn't sound like. He's too excited about this either, unless I'm not, I'm reading it wrong, I mean, I want to give you whatever you need. And if you say that I can do this, then hey, then I'm all for it, let's 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 shoot shoot for it, but if you're saying, ah, I don't know, this is kind of weird and.
When I see thirteen agencies being defined right up.
Right.
Has to cause concern for me that, you know, how hard is this target to hit?
Correct.
And these are, these are big agencies that that are accredited and that have same policies as us, and they're not difficult. So that concerns me, I'm I'm not saying at all that I that we commit neighborhood this, but I think it's gonna take some time.
But how much staff time would it take to put together a grant proposal?
It's not uh for the application, um from what I understand from other agencies, it's probably taking some staff, full-time. One or two staff, almost a month, but together.
And that does like.
Miniature predation process through C J T C.
I don't feel like anything that we talked about makes it worth that for the grant, because we're talking about one officer, because I imagine if you're a Seattle. Maybe you're putting something through where you ask for a lot of money. Um if they can, but for for us, I don't know that that's worth it, but it does seem like it might be. Not the best to lose the window to increase the tax when we're talking about, and I know taxes are. Are always a hard feeling, that when we're talking about police, you guys are a robust bargaining unit, because there's other places police can go and. Public defense, another robust bargaining unit that we contract out, and prosecutors, another robust bargaining unit, and this can be used on all those things, and we have. You know, about twenty-four months or thirty months from now to implement that, if we could see if it's feasible, because it really is, it's. It's the people that serve the city that have the most options to not serve the city, so losing funding for those services that we need would be bad. Unless, and to to echo the mayor, like, you're the professional, if it's something you're uncomfortable with, I'm not telling you how to run your agency, but. The the goal would be, if we can get funding to make sure we have it, we have public defenders and we can enforce our laws and we have. Police officers in the streets, I I think that's something we'd all like.
And the two are tied together.
No, they're mutually exclusive.
Oh, they are.
They just have, they just have the same requirements, eligible, but you and you have to have, sorry, I shouldn't say that. You have to have a sales tax approved already in your local jurisdiction to apply to to apply for the grant, we have that in place already. Outside of the twenty-fifth, House Bill fifty-six, that's, that was clearly a war, so. I apologize, it was approved by voters. I remember sometime, yes, um sometime ago already, um the first one, um or uh eighteen, thirteen, one thirty.
So backing up to where you said that this, the county can also impose um the safety tax, correct? If we did it ahead of time, and I know everybody says, well, then we have control, but if we did it ahead of time and then they do it, is it double dipping?
No, we've already done it.
Do they do, does it increase again?
In countywide, yeah, if if the county imposes a a public safety. Yeah, if if the county imposes a a public safety sales.
So it's on top of.
Then then it would be countywide if the city imposes a a sales tax, it's imposed just as a savings.
It goes to three tenths from one tenth to one percent to three tenths, one percent, right?
So I'll go back to here. So eighty two fourteen four fifty is the public safety sales tax that was. I have ten, twelve years ago through legislation. That's the one tenth to one percent that the voters in the city shalt approve. Um that is an eighty five fifteen split between the city and the county. If a county. Elected to add another two tenths, which be the three tenths total, it would be split sixty forty. That is separate from eighty two fourteen three forty five under House Bill twenty fifteen. So those are mutually exclusive. The county could elect to to adopt the. Yeah, commission, not council matically. Uh the one tenth, one percent city could let that as well.
So then essentially it would go up twice. It's not one or the other. It's.
Yeah, yeah, each jurisdiction is imposing the one tenth, one percent.
Again, we've already done that, city, the voters.
We did it under eighty two forty.
Yes, yes, yes. Though the county did it, went out to the voters for the same thing, then it's the sixty four to split after that.
Under eighty two fourteen, but in the House Bill twenty fifteen, they can do it. But as a commission action, the one tenth to one percent countywide, at city council doing one tenth, one percent. Within within the city jurisdiction and city limits.
And that would stack to two tenths of one percent within.
Within it, yeah.
That's what I was trying to get.
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Off uh off subject, Chief, uh where are we? Competitive wise salaries. Um with their officers, we put here Olympia, Tom Water, River Chen.
I think I think our total compensating compensation package is doing very well against the newer agencies. Um you can just have negotiations last year and um with our comparisons here, I think. And I was I was. Almost that, you know, look at other agencies, look at their their agreements. You guys are sitting very good.
With our comparisons. As we know, we compete with the with the South Sound, Punta Sound area that is very, very competitive between all of those government entities between. Olympia, Lacey, Tom Water, Thurston County, um there's a lot of competition and we've talked about that through the budget process and. And certified professional staff and recruiting, retaining employees in that in that market is difficult. We can't use them as our comparables. Just. We just can't keep up with the Joneses, people.
I was just trying to get to see if are we gonna be. The next few years, are we gonna be, you know? Losing people for higher salaries, so.
I mean, there's always that potential. We may have an officer meeting next month, actually, so.
So salary and compensation, right? There's other factors. Take it with your double law enforcement. I've learned over the years, you know, it's a distressful job. It's a job that's tough to balance a a work life. Or be a live appropriately and. Somebody is living out of this community because sometimes it's hard to live in a community that they can work in police any, and so if you're. Living outside the community and you have a young family or anything else that comes up, you're making some other decisions based on your. It's interpersonal life at the same time. Chief Coe said Captain Patton have done a great job in in developing. A team down there that works very well together and uh meets a lot of the needs outside of just compensation. That's really important at the same time, right? Uh that we we try to do throughout all our departments here, but. Sometimes you just can't meet with baby uh be closer at home.
Uh do you know Sheriff Spurling has any ideas about? This uh grant.
I haven't spoken to him.
Do you think uh the county commissioners are looking at this grant or are objective or?
I have I have not heard any uh any public um discussion and. Trying to think, uh last time we had discussion with Commissioner Trask and Administrator Adams, I. Think that was was discussed briefly and it wasn't on their on their agenda.
And I think the last time I have to discuss was Casey Salzberg, sure.
That is the last time we have for you this evening, so. Uh I I guess it's it. If I could sum it up, I guess, uh there's certainly concerns about. The workload and the requirements for both the grants and and the sales tax. But. There's there's some interest, I guess, if there's head nods or purple that um. That you would like us to put some more effort into into the sales tax requirements and what it would take to meet. CJTC and A W C's requirements, particularly handed down by by the H E's office, and then would you like? Some more details around that?
Um I mean, I mean, I want to give him what he needs. Like I said, he's a professional. If he think he can accomplish it, I mean, like I said, this is a three officer program, right?
That's three year. Three year and you can you can apply for ten officers if you wanna.
But it was up to three, wasn't it? I thought it was three.
I've never seen.
But it's twenty five percent. But so this slide again, seventy five percent of salaries covered within the grant, right? Twenty five percent is the local match. It's a maximum of a hundred and twenty five funding per position, which. I don't think it's an issue with the entry level police officer, at least to begin with.
So I mean, he says he could do six. You give him three under this program. I mean.
Under the grant?
Yes.
So I'm gonna turn, I mean, I think I think. I mean, I'll I'll speak for chief here, you can, um I don't frankly think the grant is viable, sustainable. I think when you're looking at this expiring in June of twenty eight and having a year to get somebody on board minimum, maybe. You know, maybe longer um without having sustainable funding at the at the end of that um. I don't know how successfully we'd be recruiting somebody under this grant. Just because I'm making commitment to an organization that my position is grant funded. Uh great, I can get my foot in the door and get to the academy, um but is that is that truly who we want? To enter into the Shell Police Department, you know, as somebody that's getting their foot the door to move on when when grant expires. Now I again. Might be speaking for the chief out of turn here, but that's that's my opinion. I think that. The sustainability of of funding for police officers significantly isn't my greatest concern and having that thought I send. In twenty eight is is again a concern. I'm talking about the escalating costs of receiving.
I'm I'm going back forth like eight times on this now, so so it doesn't it doesn't sound like our professionals. Want to move forward with this. Based on the requirements, longevity, the sustainability, so. I mean, if that's the impression that I'm getting, then I I wouldn't ask you to do that.
I wouldn't either. I I it I'm, yeah, I think you've put a lot into it already.
I mean, I'm all I'm all for. Looking for for revenue sources so we can have more police and and more services, but if it's not, if it's gonna be a waste of time and. And complicated and not work, then. I don't want to make you go through that. I mean, that's why I'm 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 going back and forth here. I want to give you what you want. Doesn't sound like it's it's gonna work.
And I'm not necessarily work, I I'm not necessarily worried about the workload. I mean, it's very similar to the accreditation. I understand what the law from us. Hmm my bottom line or what I'm looking at is if we're gonna spend the time and invest into this process. Let's get something that's going to last longer than a couple of years. Let's make it something that's. Paved the way for your air, let's make.
Okay, so so.
Tax or nothing?
So so out of the out of the um the grant, are we direction is we're not comfortable with the grant right now?
I think we've, even if we wanted to apply for the grant, it would take a whole month of. Someone's administrative time and I don't I don't think as long term, this is the the right program to fit for us. So I, as much as I'd want to add another patrol officer, um I don't think this is the right fit, right?
You know, when I came in tonight, I was actually really hopeful about this, but after hearing the timeframe and the requirements, I have a lot more concerns than I do confidence. Um I personally don't feel comfortable changing our policy just to meet these requirements. But again, I would refer to you and what you feel comfortable with, so um I'm a little more reserved tonight, but. I'm open to discussion. I'm on the board for Crossroads, and so I know when you apply for a grant, how that they play with the puppet strings, right? You gotta do this to get this. I totally get it, and so I I very, I don't. Um thank you for bringing us the information, though.
Yeah, I think you've said everything there is to say about the grant. It seems like it's not so feasible.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I agree. I definitely don't like the idea of somebody else setting our policy based upon now knowledge of our community or anything else. And I think, Chief, you know better than anybody else, you know, if this is something that's viable and this is something that you're really gonna be able to get down. And if you're just gonna be spinning your wheels on it, it doesn't make any sense, so next option.
One tenth, where are we there? You're doing the separate, right?
Uh that's fine, I can, you know, I think I think we have the opportunity to, if you don't mind me judging that, we have the opportunity to monitor this and how the CJTC. Administers this with other organizations, because we do have a little bit of time. I mean, we can. We can wait a little bit, not dive in headfirst and get.
I like that. Yeah, I don't want to, that's I like the idea of coming back to this.
See how this is administered with other other jurisdictions, monitor this, talk to some of the other jurisdictions that are maybe um. Maybe find success or meeting the needs and and learn from those experiences at the same time.
Okay.
And then and then bring that. Bring that back for further considerations.
Yes, please.
There we go.
Talk about a timeline at this point, apologize.
Yeah, I have a problem reaching out to my uh other agencies and partners out there and seeing how the process is going and.
I just like the since the tax window sunsets, so it's like us to have deliberately chosen one way or the other at the end, so that's. They might not distribute all that money, the hundred million dollar fund, so there might be another opportunity. In the future, but I'm not gonna bank on that, but what I'm saying is this, the twenty twenty jurisdictions. Like for this, how many jurisdictions are eligible? It seems like everyone's seeing that this is on our us take on. And not only that, thirteen of the twenty were rejected, so. Um it just seems like the the program, although funded, I don't, they might not even. Get to distribute all that money out there, so we it might be better to wait if there's a different opportunity.
Interesting how that works. I just heard the word sweep, um and and it brings me back to the um. The alternate response team grant that we're successful with, and you know, they didn't notify us. That we received the funds until late September, right? I received the grant. It was effective July one of this year. They notified us of September, so you lose that ability to provide those services, right? North Mason Regional Fire Authority, who, you know, we approved in I L A with is out hiring. That peer support specialist now, so they couldn't start that if though. We were notified of the award and we come to you for, right, for legislative action. Now they've been hired, so. That grant that's in June thirty of the next year, we're lucky, really lucky to get six months of service from that grant. They will have another grant. Window available, but that doesn't mean it's the funds that were unexpended. Those most likely will be. Swept into another another program or something else, unfortunately. So, yeah, at this point, it's hard to hard to say, well. A long answer to a short question. It's hard to say what happens. It'd be great if, you know, those dedicated funds were carried over and put into. Public safety for jurisdictions, you know, maybe it's public defense offset the costs there. Um or something to that extent, but there's no guarantees about what's gonna happen when they enter session.
It's almost like they didn't want us to apply for this, so they could sweep it. I mean, anyway.
Um well, sorry, Chief, uh I really was excited about this last year when it passed in the House and Senate and. I thought it was gonna be something. I was I swear it was up to three, it was for three officers, so the uh minimum of that. Maybe they changed at the end, but yeah, I was hoping that we could get three officers and then by the time that those officers were all. The free year, you might have three retirements and then we just had three officers for free, almost for free, for three years, but.
Yeah, watching the webinars and participating in in those webinars, CJTC, but I know two or three of them. And Chiefs involved in it. You know, in uh in local organizations and professional um. Affiliations, you know, it's really, you know, we're really hearing those frustrations from other other jurisdictions and working through. This bill and some of these jurisdictions could put a heck of a lot of time and effort into it. Um and we're hearing, we're hearing where those gaps are are missing right now, so. We're not the only ones that are seeing this and hopefully we can learn from. Some more to go um after across the states.
Looking for them, so. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Director Jay Harris is going to give us an opening about the trend, but he can benefit this. Sales tax.
Good evening, Council. I handed out some information to you, uh the larger spreadsheets and a lot of numbers on it. That will be at the end of my first edition. Uh we'll get far.
Uh it's thinking. Not talking about police again, that's where we're at.
So uh first slide here, a couple papers on there, um we actually found a picture of of the uh Brockdale. Which was done pretty recently. That was up there. That was through some federal bones. Uh same route to school that just went in with last year, a bunch of different sites. And then uh the downtown connector paving with the new roundabout and all that and uh. I don't know, Mary must have found that. That's a great picture, yeah. So I'm gonna just recycle through a bunch of information I've out of prior discussions and everything, so just to talk a little more about what the street fund does. Payment condition that that's. There's the next slide right there. So uh we got a lot of seventy nine miles, uh so that doesn't blame us. That's just a general standard of the road, but you know, thirty eight point five. Uh that's a lot of roadway to maintain. Then the roads are classified by arterials, collectors, bowl streets and then alleys. Um and then um it says two thousand sixteen, you know, we've done over ten miles of uh roadway improvements. With with the law um using the transportation benefit district uh funds. And then uh general fund contributions, you know, since two thousand sixteen and then also like coronary uh grants. So we're using T V D and, you know, getting uh ten cents, we put in ten cents. And get ninety cents out on on products from different agencies. And then cascade natural gas went around the city, put in a bunch of gas lines and we had them uh do some shit feeling. These other things where they were all over roads, so we're a little newer and so we had to use itself. And then the sewer uh info infiltration project, that'll perform a lot of time here, but uh. There was significant headline projects that also paved a whole bunch of roadways. So it all added up to over ten miles, which is a good thing for the city. And then you can see down below there uh to the right there, the map of all the different products, so. We've sort of bounced around the city a lot, which is good for the community, right? We're just not working downtown or. Up in the angle side or mountain view zones, uh we're sort of around the city. And next slide, please. That's good. It's a delay is good. This is saying all right, obviously.
Well, it's gonna be on twice now, careful.
So F T Es and and public works, so uh we have forty seven point six five uh F T Es. And so you can see how it's broken out, uh you know, we got uh the the general fund part of us. And uh you know, that's public works admin as engineering and uh we have the uh the S and P D. Uh wrecking parts, facilities, uh some community center stuff. And then the general fund parts and uh facilities also, that's just a small portion. Uh, but the street fund, you can see there's four point six five people. This is the largest asset in the city by value. Uh, you know, tons of center line miles. And we don't have very many people to have fun, obviously. So um and I never did a comparison on Wayne Miles versus street fund people. But uh it'd be interesting to see where we're at. Um and that hasn't increased any since I've been here. I don't know if it's decreased over the years. It used to be the general fund used to fund. The majority of the street fund uh back in the past, right? And um anyways, the general fund is just not keeping up. You know, with the different revenue sources over the years. And we're looking at, you know, at gas taxes, sales tax and that sort of thing. Uh next slide please. So some of the things we do, street sweeping, you've seen there a lot of the lot. This is the season and their avenue that is almost done. A lot of roadside bone during the summer, a snow removal during the winter. Uh, the traffic signal maintenance, got a lot of fat going on. Pottles this time of year. We put cold mix in during the winter. And then we go back and pop hot, we have to pull that out and then hot patch them uh during the summer months. But uh anyways, we can't hot patch during the winter because the plants are down for maintenance, the hot place plants. And it's a long drive to go get it, come back. You know, there's water in the hole, also to issues. So we do temporary patching during the winter. Uh sidewalk grinding, we have a grinding machine, uh crosswalk painting downtown. We have um the backer truck that does a bunch of different uh uh street things for us. We have the brand new patch truck, a patch swatch. And then uh we do a grind and inlays. We do smaller projects in-house. We do small grinding inlays. Small overlays. Uh we don't have a peaking machine and and larger rollers and that sort of thing. Uh next slide. And then uh some of the capital projects, uh downtown connector, couple slides here on that, the Brockdale paving, that's the finished product. Uh that turned out to be the Western Gateway at the top here, a railroad that is a very great project. Parkin lot right over here, relatively successful. Um you can see that was uh thirteen for the chip seal. And uh you can see it was a well needed project. I'll be a part of the hospital and all that. And then uh some of the safe routes to school locations on the bottom, next slide. Thank you, Herb.
Absolutely. Easiest thing I've done all day.
Well, time to end?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. I was saying.
Now you're the delay.
So we have a few more here. Uh London Highway North, uh that's our upcoming project. Uh. Because of uh funding and making the money real and stuff, it's likely we're not gonna make it the summer of twenty twenty-six. It's gonna be the spring of twenty twenty-seven. You can see uh Turner was really bad off. That was during your time and it. You don't know it, road, hopefully you can recover.
That doesn't narrow it down. There were dirt roads here, right?
Yeah. So we got that paved. Uh front street worked out real good for us. Uh that was with the county. Uh Lake Bullard was another one, another one that needed a lot of work out before my time here. And then um anyways, those are some of the uh London Highway North and High Street. Those are uh some of the systemic pedestrian improvement projects, i.e. safety projects. And then uh also uh the uh looking highway south, a mid-block crossing and showoff figures there. And then that's upcoming. And then uh Robert Avenue, uh we're looking uh between uh first. And eight, some various improvements. Uh most of it is at Third Street, another uh pedestrian crossing. Next slide, and I'll pay attention to this time. So um these are some of our matching dollars at work. So Turner Avenue. And uh I wish I could get a project uh for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars if I can. We have a percent match on that. Those are good numbers. Um prices for asphalt, paving companies, all that have gone up way up. Uh so the downtown connector, that was a huge project, three point three million. That's great, great pricing. Look at all the sidewalks they did and all the paving they did and medias and all that. Uh so their current city match on those from ten percent. Uh Western Gateway was also ten percent. Um T I B is a great funding source. That's where we do the ten cents and we get ninety cents. We are responsible per cost for, we run some of those projects through T I D. So when they take longer and they cost more later. A lot of times we have to pick that part out. And so when the end project is done, sometimes we think pay fifteen or twenty cents. But it's still eighty, twenty, I'll take that any day of the week for these large projects. Um so you can see the safe routes to school, uh Brockdale, the maps in there. And then right now, uh through T I B again, is a ten percent funding match. That's.
Ask a good question about the project, have we going to twenty-seven? Are we not concerned that state will sweep, sweep those monies like they did the last one? The roundabouts.
Not the funding through the transportation board, um improvement board. Uh that typically is a square. We haven't had a problem with that. Yeah, we're talking about having leading while with him. Uh I won't be at our other meeting. Um anyways, uh but I'm gonna be talking to them at the end tomorrow about the biplanes and the side of the road. That's the discussion I had with them, with you guys, I need to have with them and make sure our funding partners are, you know that. So payment condition index with this is a little old news, but uh twenty twenty, we had a payment condition index of sixty-nine. And you can see the different color coding in twenty twenty and um how obviously you don't want the, the lower numbers. Which were the, the darker red. Um and then that whole graphic on the upper right is pretty interesting. So. You can see that uh seventy-five percent of the life of pavement is sort of down to ten years. It needs some sort of treatment. That could be a chip seal, um that could be a story seal. That could be an overlay, that could be a grinding inlay. You definitely wanna crack seal it all the time. So um. We're constantly out there working on these streets. There's a lot of roads that haven't been touched, especially local roads in thirty years. Uh we just got done with that, uh with the project we did this year, you know, up in the Mountain View neighborhood. Um then we did a whole bunch of roads that hadn't any, had no overlays since they were originally installed, thirty-five years ago. So uh they're great projects. And I'll, I'll get to in a minute. So our project prioritization, they go back to that again. So you guys not agree, or we can change that also. But how do we prioritize our money? We should go ahead and follow up. Next slide please. So twenty twenty-four, that was a recent survey that we did. We jumped up to a seventy-two for years, which was good. One thing, the twenty twenty setting was a little iffy. We weren't quite sure, were we really at that? Or maybe a little higher, but we have made a difference here. And you can see, you know, that sixty-two of our pavement, percent of our pavement is in very good or good condition. You know, so we're doing good uh there. The very poor pavement costs us a lot of money to go fix. So unfortunately, you know, that's where we get a lot of complaints and stuff. But. For us, we need to go maintain and keep the pavement maintained, this in fair condition and get it back up to good. Then doing full digouts on the very floor, because it costs four times as much money. While you're doing that, your fair payments go to four. And certainly in the real vicious cycle because of that ten, fifteen year window of when you really need to be out there. So we need to keep our good payments good. Next slide please. So you guys uh had consensus in twenty twenty-four that you really wanted to try to maintain that seventy-two. Don't let the roads sweat, right? And so obviously we need to continue looking at funding. Try to keep projects out there and a lot of this brand funding. So um. We need about two million dollars a year of completion will happen, okay? And so if you do a big project like London Highway North though, you know, that's almost four million dollar project, but that's done. You know, and that's a lot of brand driven, uh you know, using our funds, matching all that. So um anyways, it's achievable, but only through grant funding. You know, we don't have in our currency yet. And you'll see the numbers later. Um with our current funding that we bring in without grant funds. Um we're not achieving that, that two million dollars a year. This is not gonna happen. So um. Anyways, if we don't do anything at all though, that uh in the next six years or so. Um it's going to drop to sixty-one, so it's gonna plummet fast. Cause we got a lot of pavement in that fair, maybe good, and it's going to start taking us down. I'm trying to recover from that payment condition index drop like that. Will take, you know, six, eight years to get it back up to seventy again. So it's really important to stay on it, I guess is what I'm saying. Uh next slide. So here's our prioritization. Um and this is still a culmination of a bunch of different slideshows and market record did that. And that's why I'm going a little quick too, because I, I value all the time. But um so we do prevent, preventive maintenance projects on arterial collector roadways. With fair to good payment condition indexes. Those are the ones with the trucks. Those are the ones that when you leave your local street, everybody is driving on these roads. They're the ones that are getting used the most. We really need to keep up on those. Because when they go bad, like London Highway North, they go bad quick. Cause you got a lot of traffic counting them, right? So then uh the next uh would be uh preventive maintenance projects on local roads with fair to good payment condition indexes. So again, you work on a high volume roads, keep up on your lower volume local roads. And then uh number three is any arterial collector road that is in pretty bad shape. You gotta get on those, okay? Then you would go to the local roads next that are in really bad shape, okay? And then the last one is the gravel roads, unless there's like safety issues, okay? And we're slowly picking off gravel roads in the background with our paving machine. They're really low volume usually. But um up on the hill, s- the steep road, what was the name of that road again? Subside, oh. That wasn't Turner. Up here on Castle, it was forty, it was forty.
Sorry that we.
Really steep, washing out every year. We were up there all the time doing problem work. Cars are having problems on a fire trucks can't make it, that sort of thing. We're gonna go keep a road like that. You know, the, the, you have to do stuff like that. Gravel roads don't work out very good. So then the other thing is when we're doing stuff in a utility project, we're trying to overlay the road on our way out, right? So and we really try not to pave a road with what we call rock utilities under it. That's a bad waterline, bad sewer line. We really don't wanna get into that. Because that's a throwaway overlay is what I would call it, that eventually you gotta go in there, dig that waterline back up and reoverlay again. Sometimes you're forced to do it on a road that's in really poor condition though, and it's not travel. You don't have money to do the waterline. You've got to keep traffic moving on it. So sometimes you do get into throwaway overlays, but I really don't want to do that as policy, right?
Like painting a dying car.
Yeah, it's not good.
Paint over rust.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so here's just some sort of summary statements. So it's a lot of street is the largest asset in the city. And um anyways, uh we need to keep up on the budget for the street fund. That's what we're talking about tonight. And then um leaving such revenue to maintain the payment condition index. Properly plan out the projects using the PCI map. We know where we're going. That's why we did that study. Every five years you look at it and it tells you where you need to be going, right? Um and then uh locally acquired street funds uh is the largest source of revenue for most cities in Washington. Not state or federal funds. We've been really successful though acquiring funds. Uh there's a need, we've done a good job of acquiring grant funds. And uh state uh motor fuel taxes decreasing, or as you're getting better mileage, they're hybrid cars. Now there's electric cars, right? So their revenue collection that, that we get, that's a piece of our street fund. Is state gas tax, revenue sharing. We're not getting as much. It's slowly just staying the same or decreasing, right? Um and then our street fund has problems just like everybody else's street funds, just like Washita is having issues also. So it's statewide issue of funding uh roadway improvements and uh police and that sort of thing. So it's very common, uh as their agencies are having the same issues. So uh fair for forty percent of our pavement. And then uh we wanna try to do maintenance sooner than later. You get into what we call full digouts. And what that is, is when the road is really destroyed, like Turner. They have to pick everything up. That's the asphalt, the base rock. Put down new base rock and new asphalt. You gotta haul that off. It costs you a ton of money rather than just overlaying the top surface. Don't wait too long is what that comment is. Um and then uh so we spend less money on prevent, I'm on number eight, with preventive maintenance measures. For the fair to good even services, that surfaces to eliminate all reconstruction projects. And then uh we wanna plan our proactive maintenance projects. And we wanna reduce reactive labor and materials. Uh except for e- especially like the winter time pothole. In a perfect world, when I was with Walton, we didn't repair one pothole one letter, none. Their PCI was in the upper eighties and they happened to have no pothole calls out, all odds. And it just shocked all this. Their PCI was so high that the street crews were off doing signs and a bunch of other things all went along. They weren't out potholing, okay? We're never going to be there, okay? That I can see unless we can get off the ground and start levitating around somewhere, tell you the way, get off the streets. So uh then just improve their low volume train, train streets, increase our visibility, decrease automobile maintenance costs. Those potholes and stuff, you know, they affect your car all the time, your shocks, your tires, your wheels, your brakes, all that. Um good streets, improved property values, business activity for the entire community. Next slide. Okay.
There's always a hard copy here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's your part.
Great.
I can read it, you read, yeah, I bet. Cheated, I guess.
So the very first uh section is uh revenue estimates and all the helpless operations and maintenance, okay? We gotta have the people, we have to have the vehicles, we have to supply, we have to be all of that. So you will see that if you have the DVD, civil stats, we get a little bit of right away from SSU engineering. Um we do have multiple gas tax and just state gas tax revenue sharing. It's not going up much. We have some necessary charges in the street fund that we apply. Um street sweeping um is required by our stormwater program. Um because we're a phase two city. So the stormwater fund is sending money to the street fund due to street sweeping. Which it is a good move. Get a little bit of interest, interest is declining because our balance is falling way down.
And it's.
Yeah. There's uh transfers in, and the transfers in uh is uh used to be TBD fund balance. But that balance is spent now. And uh so the two seventy-five that I show on this uh spreadsheet is for REIT one two. To help with sidewalk projects, the street projects and that sort of thing. And then uh you'll see, and I'm more looking at twenty twenty-seven here. That uh the transferring from the general fund in this particular model is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So um I, on the very first row in that, sales tax TBD in twenty twenty-seven, you see it jumped up. Okay, that assumed a tenth of a percent increase in the, the TBD tax for revenue. So you can see the twenty twenty-seven revenue increase TBD tax. It uh included a pretty healthy uh general fund transfer and a pretty healthy REIT tax. Uh dollar amount that came in. And those all continued through the six-year plan that I show you here, okay? So you take that revenue, when you go down below here, the revenue estimate for capital projects. And um it used money from above. And it assumes we're getting grant funding and that sort of thing and matching money and all that. So the capital projects are sort of living on their own in there, if you know what I mean, that they're. That revenue, so when you see a big number, that's a crap. We can't afford that coming out of the street fund, right? That revenue, so when you see a big number, that's a grant, we can't afford that coming out of the street fund, right? So that there sort of lives on its own. So if you go down.
And Jay, yes. Real quick, you don't see that grant like the three point six and two point five every year, because. They just don't fund.
That's correct.
Jurisdictions every year at those amounts of.
And it takes time to get the contracts out and apply for the next one and and do all that. So you sort of see those are intermittently happening. Um I am gonna be talking to the county about uh getting some federal funds from them uh every year. Uh that's that hundred and seventy-five you see down there, and they can share some of their gas tax money with us, or at least are allowed to share it. You know, we need to talk to them about it. Uh we did, when we did Broaddale Road, that we used county federal gas tax money for that project. Um the problem is, is when a project is federalized and it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's almost not worth it. You have a whole kind of paper process, I say almost on it, it is a lot of work. So if you're doing a federal project, it needs to be big money, big herd money, right?
And we frankly don't have the resources in-house to do that. We we have, we have a contract with an engineering firm to help us out with that. Um that federal process, just because if labor intensive as it is and and just. Staying up to date on the processes and the the product that they need on feed on a regular basis, it's just up for its own jurisdiction like that.
I just met with Washstop today, they saw enough close out Brockdale Road yet, still on their menu, there's still stuff they're doing. And it was a smaller project, it just won't go away, so they're a little tougher, but. Money is money, right? And uh you know, we need to look at all sources of money, even if it does take staff time or consultant time. In our venue to try to keep the the pavement condition index up aside from to get it. So um. Anyways, if you go down and just look at the rest of the revenue for capital projects, um I show the some some trails in there. Uh for some uh some money uh that uh we're in design processes. Hopefully we're eligible for some grants down the road, that's what that is, that's some trail construction money there. And then um I uh show uh some traffic impact fee projects uh down the road. Um at the very bottom of uh the capital projects revenue. That uh that's used in our traffic impact funds, those are developer initiated fees that they have when they pick up their building permit. They help with capacity, help projects outside of their projects. Those are our charitable and collector signaled roundabouts, that sort of thing. So um when you look at the expenditures and operations and maintenance, this is right out of your budget book. Except for the very last. One that I include yearly chip ceiling pavement maintenance projects. And in twenty twenty-seven, that goes out of a hundred thousand dollars. Um that's for the front street, the Capitol Hill, Mountain View, those county paving products that I'm dealing with and then able to do that every year. Um I didn't put them in with the capital uh projects expenditures. Cause I really wanted to make sure those are really more operations and maintenance type of projects, so I wanted to keep that over there and try to keep things straight. So uh anyways, when you get down here, if you go all the way down to the bottom. And look at the street fund balance, own M only, that's what we really need to look at. That can we do our operations and maintenance in-house? The projects will happen if we have a little more money, we can go get grants and all that. But we need to run all of those services I showed you, showed you earlier. The fund has to work for that first, right? If you have additional money, then you go get grants and and do some other things. So uh when you look at twenty twenty-seven and you start looking at the ending fund balance here. You see all the way across, it's, it drops some, right? But I'm still above, if you go to twenty thirty. You, I show three hundred and thirty-nine, six thirty-nine. And I show them any fund balance of four thirteen nine oh three. And so I have to be, your council, council policy is I have to have sixteen percent of expenditures in this or. Or emergencies or whatever. This balance, okay, I made it, I got some projects done, I'm keeping the roads maintained. But I do have a significant general fund contribution. Significant REIT one and two contribution and an increase in the tax, okay? So this is the the large plan to keep running what we have going now, okay?
What is earth pollution, twenty percent though? Not the street, not the place of maintenance.
If you're right, uh those, yeah, so. I know, yeah, the council adopted that sometime, I think, cause they ran into street fund pro- uh problems. So they reduce it a little bit, just give them a little breathing room. And who picked sixteen to set up time and a little bit later, uh for sure. Why it was two sixteen more than you know? So I.
Sixteen and a half percent.
So option number two. The option two. Hold out the ten to the percent E V D. Okay, the additional uh transportation benefit district sales test. And so it's same spreadsheet, but that revenue source was just pulled out. And so if you look at the ending kind of balance, okay? I run out of money in twenty twenty-eight. And you start going negative uh in uh twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, that's the red numbers. Without that, that's how sensitive street fund is, is to that revenue source. Then uh the last one would be the option three. And that is when you remove the temp. You do need. And you reduce uh REIT one. And REIT two. And you reduce the general fund transfer to two hundred thousand dollars. And you can see uh I started having problems in twenty twenty-seven, so after this next year, we start having problems. So we're in the red down the bottom very quickly to that one.
And as a reminder. Twenty twenty-six budget has a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar transfer from general fund to the street, uh at a two hundred thousand dollar transfer rate. To the street fund, we are limited by REIT funds and what they can use for maintenance operations, I think it's twenty five?
Twenty max.
Twenty-five percent of our total. REIT balances, correct? Yes. So the remainder can be spent on capital projects, but again. We have a decent fund balance right now in REITs. Um we hope with residential development coming on board in the next couple of years. Um that may continue to stimulate, but. We need to continue watching that.
And there's other uses for REIT fund too, I mean they have parks and all sorts of things.
Yeah, we've used quite a bit of REIT um the last two years on facilities, projects, HVAC. Replacing, we're putting in handicap accessible doors out here on the police and. And corporate amenities and as we speak, they're working in those states.
I didn't see anything until the twenty year. Twenty-six million dollar ADA plan. That factored in at all.
Not much, sidewalks will sort of come along as we keep paving projects. Highway north, we're gonna go through and do a bunch of work of driveways, uh ADA ramps obviously, boltouts, that sort of thing. So uh a lot of them on the collectors are gonna happen when we do our roadway projects. Um but connectivity of sidewalks, you know, through local neighborhoods and that sort of thing and. Building new sidewalks are in here, um then also repairing existing walls. We can get them out, keep them ground, uh you know, keep tripping as it sounds. But when we get at a property owner where it needs to be replaced, it's sort of a huge offset or something, uh we don't have any funds in there for that.
You'll see sidewalks in the third. Um table down, it's right in the middle, and it's. Three hundred and sixty bucks, three hundred and eighty dollars, contribute damage and stuff plus. After twenty twenty-five.
Let me ask a number question, um. Between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six is a pretty substantial increase in both the T V D and uh fuel. Um the state, our share of fuel, it's fifty-five thousand dollars for the fuel and it's seventy-five thousand dollars for the T V D. And it's not mirrored in other areas, is there? A reason.
Yeah, so uh the sales tax T V D, um the twenty twenty-six uh budget was adopted at seven fifty and went up by seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's just what the trend we've been seeing um of sales tax that has been going up, okay, right? Um for that, but the other thing is you gotta remember these are budget numbers, right? So the twenty twenty-five budget probably is a little lower than maybe should have been, right, when that was adopted. So that, and then uh what was your second question?
That same question for uh city share state gas tax, but that that's.
Correct, so twenty twenty-five and uh I don't have a. Budget. But uh it was on the state twenty twenty-five's a a low number that we put in there, place holder. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have to stroke the zero that. But the twenty twenty-six budget, we looked at historical and we set it at one ninety. And it was, you know, we're probably bringing in almost two hundred. Or was a little lower than what we would have brought as shortly as thought we were gonna bring in. We'll be a little conservative budgeting. But I I can check back into that, that's a good comment, let me look into those.
Gas tax for his main. Yes, that was uh second, the R F C is super bullish on it, they're they're, it's kinda different because they did a. A gas tax increase, like a gallon or down, so.
And we're not guaranteed to have that passed through the local jurisdictions that may be led by the state, correct?
I know the.
Long term.
The uh increase didn't impact the state's share. Yes, so or the city share.
City share, exactly right. The six, six cent, I think, the whole increase that wasn't, wasn't allocated or passed down to jurisdictions.
So some discussions, just on the next slide, I mean, what do you folks wanna see? Um do you need more information? Um. I forgot. Where it is, I missed out. Uh, hopefully it's in pass. So anyways, uh so if you're looking at the street fund, we've people is a large part of that fund. Even though we don't have very many, oh, people are expensive, right? And so um anyway, the priority chart is public safety is number one. So um anyways, we need, we need to pop hole repairs, reduce intervals. We need to strike the roads, we have to do new utility locating, that's required by law. Um pick up animals, uh fix the signs, guardrails. Street sweeping uh for reduced intervals on that, have to keep our signals maintained. Um we have rapid uh flashers at the uh school zones that we're in there all the time working on for the school district, they're starting to age out. Um windstorms, we're out there doing branches, blowing down trees, all that. Um we're doing roadside mowing, we would reduce it to intersections only. And then side hills and all that along corridors. You can see this on state highways, they're not mowing that anymore, cause they, they don't have the funds do that. So I mean, you know, we can reduce services, right, from what we're doing right now. And then we have to do uh customer relations, we get phone calls and e- emails and my sitter request and all that, we have to take care of those. So um if time allows, so um if we have to cut that, uh we do some, we do a lot of graffiti removal. Um that uh striking on the downtown parking stalls takes a considerable amount of time every year. Uh we have to paint the medias downtown. Um then permanent pothole patching during the summer, we get out and do that. It's likely we would just keep cold mixing on them, had a reduced interval. Um. We uh, the street department sees all the development plans that come through. But if we don't have as many staff, the engineering department's gonna be making decisions on that behalf, and they might not be super happy about that. Um they, we are, we're trying to be all inclusive, that all team members get to see these development plans. Um anyways, uh the shoulder rock, we go and uh the roads that don't have curves, we do shoulder rock on them. Um and we do a lot of gravel road uh maintenance, uh that's alleys and roadways. And uh that would uh probably be reduced significantly, obviously the phone starts ringing more. Um we don't, uh the roadside mowing and vegetation spraying would be reduced. Likely winter operations would be suffered too, cause I just don't have the people, I don't have the budget. And I'm not out there sanding the ice as much, um doing that sort of thing. Well, probably, you know, primary routes will be number one, that's the hospitals, critical facilities. But uh other than that, uh secondary routes and the tertiary routes might not even get done, right? Um I came from a city that did nothing. When I started there, we didn't have a road, uh 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 I ice all that, it was like just stay home. And the community did not like that, I mean, but that's, they had operated that way for years and, cause they didn't have money in the street fund to do that. And then uh we have a fu- flooding sandbag program up by the animal shelter, you see they're all stacked up there, we have a pile of them. So if people need sandbags, they can come get them, we have more sitting there too, uh stuff like that will probably get produced. And then with budget reductions completely eliminated, uh we wouldn't be doing large overlay patching projects. Obviously, the pavement condition index is gonna suffer. Um that uh we have a street employees, even though we have uh, you know, over four employees. We send them out uh with other divisions, a a super job, a water job. And then they come back and help us on street projects. The street people left. We wouldn't be sharing them, they'd be off, just doing the things that they need to do all the time. Uh we strike all the city parking lots every year, that we'd probably have to contact that out or do something else. Payment crack ceiling, not a good thing, if you eliminate that, um your pavement condition index, the water gets in the cracks. It gets in the roadway grade problem, and then cars drive over it, you get more cracks, yeah. So uh anyways, we haul a lot of garbage and construction materials. Um uh radar speed that finds signs, we're always doing that, those are hopping around, walking all over the place. But we wouldn't get to Christmas decorations and tree lights downtown. We do Christmas tree recycling, that's the leftover from uh when we did.
Start a basement, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hanging flower baskets, we coordinate a lot with that. Uh we pick up garbage downtown, um do the s- street tree maintenance downtown. Uh we have a lot of uh community events, we're putting in road barricades, closures, that sort of thing for the community events. And uh the sidewalk cleaning, street sweeping after all. And then we're going around and uh every week we're out looking to see what's going on with the homeless camps. And then picking up a lot of garbage uh every week. So that's what happens if we gotta reduce services and sort of how we're listing the priorities. And they can mix around a little bit, you know, if if that's where we went with the street fund. And now I think we're at the last slide, you know, we made it. So it was Park Street, that was a good picture, um it's amazing, uh this was a company we hired, these are our guys. That are uh paving Park Street. And it's a lot of work, uh if you're on a paving crew, you're working hard, I'm not so down about that. So we just wanted to talk more about the general fund transfers, REIT transfers. Obviously, uh increasing the T V D by another tenth of a percent. Um talk about that. And then uh see where we'll sort of probably get there with the street fund.
Circle's kind of back to our discussion and our retreat about certain stuff, right? We're just, can we keep coming back and talking about that sustainability amongst all, amongst in all of our general purposes.
Well, the good news is that we went six and nine to seventy-two, and thanks for all the hustle that you put into to make that happen. Um I was for a point one percent. Increase of the T V D to watch the voters, that was not even. Um talked about in the council. And it looks like we need to have the point one percent just to maintain our current services. And if we wanna grow, we need to keep our streets up to date and in our best position that we can, so I'm for um. Choice number one. Um and I think that we should aggressively pursue keeping our streets, not just maintaining them, but improving them. So that's my two cents.
Um I definitely think that there's an absolutely need for this, but um we did just hit the voters with the T V D on about this recently, so. What would happen if we looked at adopting this, say, August of next year?
Yeah, that'd be possible, Mark, uh the timeframe on something like that.
Yeah, uh. Or I have to go back and look at, uh because it's the same implication as the public safety sales tax, so. Um it would not, it would be collected in. January one of twenty seven, would be the earliest that'd be collected by D O R.
And that's what my, my budget shows that it came in in twenty, we start in twenty twenty-seven in January.
January one, April one and July one are the dates that D O R certain collect dates. Set stacks, and I'd like to get seven five days prior.
We have to get that to the auditor by, kind of right there.
And uh let's see. It, well, it it's councilmatic, sorry.
Oh, yeah, if we just thought it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry, if it's if it's a ballot measure, it is. What was it, it was? Just this year, April action for the August ballot measure? If I remember right. Yeah, sorry, it's somewhere in that timeframe, it was forty five days or something like that prior to the. The county auditor has has a cut off, but obviously that's councilmatic, just, we're just um beholden to the the D O R type thing.
I I understand the need, I also understand that our community has hit pretty hard financially as it is too. Um I can't with good conscience right now tell them. We're gonna take more of your money for stuff uh without giving you the opportunity to vote on it. So I completely understand where you're coming from, but I have to represent my community.
Sure.
That's fair.
Well, I guess I shouldn't let you guys go, um you know, we we are elected to provide a level of service, and if we can't provide that, I'm not sure why, why we're here. Um we have roads that need attention, we have sidewalks, we have trees. We have, you know, we have dangerous sidewalks that actually need to be be addressed over the years, and that's not even in this plan or two hundred and thirty six dollar, whatever it was. Um you know, we talk about not raising a tax because the people didn't vote for it. Well, last week, all seven of us voted to raise, which property tax one percent, all seven of us did that. Um so. You know, I I think this is well needed, I think that we we need to provide the level of service, at least maintain the level of service that we're providing right now. Um so I would be supportive of of going after about ten percent.
I think we need it, um I think the roads are the most. If quality of roads are really important in reflecting the quality. To people who are coming into the community and whether they want to spend their money, whether we can upgrade our intersections to make sure people can move through town. It's important and we need it, um obviously, my head was already at taking to the voters, I'm perfectly happy just to vote it through, but I understand, we just took this to the voters. It feels a little weird to take something to the voters and let's say, but also we're gonna raise it. So I understand the position to move into the voters, and that's why, yeah, we need to vote on it by August if we're going to be voting on it. But that said, I will, if if the council wants to move it, I'll make yes to just move it.
Yeah, same, I mean, I. Yes, we need it, but um. Yeah, I I'm not okay with the increase right now.
I agree, I I don't think it's time for an increase right now, I'm not saying never, just not right at the moment, uh let's take a look at where we're at, let's look at. How revenue streams come in, and like you said, if we can put it on the ballot for voters, you got me there a hundred percent, I'm with that, but as far as. Us just having a vote and getting our TBD to where it is, which is supposed to be a good place, then you know, for us to just council matically say, oh yeah, here's another one. Uh definitely not with that.
Um we did that last week, but uh.
That's a cost of living increase, though, that's a completely different ballgame, you know what I mean? That's something that we've done every year for quite some time, you can throw barbs as much as you want to, I guess, if that's what you like to do, but. And absolutely, you just tried to make it like we're all, we're all just punishing the people, come on dude, why don't you act act reasonable in your speeches?
Say punish, I said we all just raised taxes one percent, all seven of us, I did not say anything bad about anything.
You you're making a a weird point that didn't need to be made, that's what you did, we all saw it, we all witnessed it. You want to have this confrontation, buddy, we can't. Come on dude, that's silly, you're bringing up things that aren't relevant.
It's absolutely relevant, we're saying we don't want to.
Oh, you like.
A tax road because we don't want to, we want to go to the people.
Absolutely, I want to go to the people.
We just did that last week.
I think the people need to vote.
So for the next. We lose thirty thousand dollars in revenue, and we should have done this last year, we wouldn't have any red on the budget if we had done it last year. Uh I think it's irresponsible for us not to do it, we were voted here to do the har- hard choices that people don't wanna, that don't want to do it for themselves. But we were elected, all of us were elected, to make decisions that were difficult, that we might not impose it on ourselves, so. Um I think you need to lay off the mayor.
Taxes have increased at a historic high across the state, and you're right, we did just implement a property tax, which is another hit to our people. And I do think that since we just did the TBD and we did property tax, we should just wait a little bit of time, we're hitting our constituents a little bit hard. We need to give them a chance to recover.
Sales tax and other fatalities are nine point eight, nine point seven. This is still a bargain to live in the city, point one percent is gonna raise one cent on a cup of coffee um down at the coffee shop.
Not all of us can afford one more cent.
Especially when adding more and more on, I would be in favor of either putting this before the uh the voters or doing this again, maybe no- next August.
Yeah, I kind of want to see uh what's coming in revenue wise, where we're sitting financially in a couple of months. I'm I'm not saying, because I do believe you need it, I do, I just feel like we've just been hitting them hard right now. I feel like we need to recoup, we we need to kind of let it set for a minute.
Well, since, I mean, let's go to voters. We do that, we get that by August, the August ballot? I mean, I'm, let's go to voters.
Every month we wait is thirty thousand dollars we're not getting.
If they want it, that's, I'm I'm home for it.
And I guess the story is, we have, if we're gonna take it to the voters, it's either we increase tax or we decrease service. It's it's pretty clear that that's going to be what happens, um we're. So.
I appreciate that, because that's uh that's absolutely where we're we're at today to to discuss this, so we can get ahead of it, right? We can get ahead of it, we can fully fund or partially fund the services that we're talking about here, or reduce those service levels, and you can discuss that in open public forum. We're gonna have a strategic planning exercise next year, council is gonna set strategic goals. Within those strategic goals, obviously, uh how we provide services to the community, uh what services we're gonna provide. I will go back to May, and I still have the, I still have the big sheets with the with the dots um on there, and we had a very tough time deciding in that. September twenty third study session of this year, when we talked about funding all of the programs that were that were brought in front of you. Uh and deciding what not to film correctly, uh so that strategic plan's gonna gonna develop that, set a course for that.
I just want to remind the council, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna be, we should have done this last year, councilmatic. That's it. That's money to take this through the ballot.
It does, yes, a ballot measure is depending on what else is on top, what else is on the ballot.
So we put it on the ballot?
I'm okay with that, yeah, if the people want to.
Can we put it in February?
No, it's too late. Not too late, ever.
Um. Well, not for the February ballot, no.
Oh, okay.
We can, but I'd I'd have to double check the auditor's office, I think it sounds. If I, if I remember right, the 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 August election date was just after the notification date, the auditor's office for for the February election.
Have I remembered it here?
Yeah, now that I'm thinking back, um so it would have to be acted on by the council. In August, early August to be on February, April, I think, is special election, correct? As well, and then you're.
If there's one.
And then if there is one in August. I can, I can certainly gather more information from the auditor's office, though, about election aids and that timeline, but obviously, it's thinking back. But whatever it is, four months apparently is the my capabilities to.
I think that we need there.
I'll develop, I'll I'll find some more information about the dates, and then um provide that, provide that information to council, we can draft. We can draft an ordinance that that would come to a council meeting in an appropriate timeline, if that's. And certainly you can take take action on at that point.
Um I want to go back to roads really quick, just to talk about, what is the plan for downtown? Get a lot of people talking about downtown, it's concrete, and I know that the reason we have concrete is because of open mud flats. But there are some pretty bad spots downtown, what is the plan for the concrete roads? Is there a plan for the concrete roads?
Not road by road, we don't have a plan, uh we have the pavement condition index map that shows where there the worst. Um and so over time, uh with the hundred thousand dollar a year projects that we could concentrate downtown. Um it's hard to get a grant for local roadways, um that needs to come from the the TBD or 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 gas tax revenue, right? But uh I can't go out and get a grant because we're not past paper later or anything, so very difficult. So it's coming out, you know, funny that that we adopt or receive.
Yeah, my 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 question is 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 how, is there a plan to address the concrete, I mean, it has to be there, correct? I mean, we can't really put blacktop down.
Sorry, it depends on road base and what's underneath it, which most likely, those roads were built eighty or more years ago. Um it's not a very good road base center right now.
And that's the the concrete uh is serving as road base, it's it's a superior roadway, it's been in for an extremely long time. And so uh anyways, the current engineering design instruction standards manual says that if the road is over fifty percent concrete. There's some over like half and half or whatever, the road goes back in as concrete, okay? To maintain the character of the downtown, that was in this twenty twenty three standard manual, we can always buy that, that isn't, that's policy to set within this annual. Uh to just maintain the concrete roadway character downtown, you know, there's a lot of downtown that obviously it's not cobblestone, but. Everybody has asphalt, right, and but trying to maintain it, um you know, if that's a council priority, you know. We can look at different projects over time uh to improve the downtown roadways.
Okay, no, I'm just curious, because I get a lot of comments on the talking downtown, and I've always thought it was because you really can't do much down there because of the the water levels.
Um you go, then you're doing a whole day out, concrete's coming out, you're digging down, putting in significant amounts of base rock. And a very expensive project, probably repairing the concrete, trying to break it up, and so getting slaps that have sunk. We can jack those up, we've had a project seven years ago before I got here, they did a bunch of nodes. That help, we can grind any high points off also, and then obviously, we gotta go replace some sections, right? But that would probably be the preferred alternative, then to to go to all asphalt would be extremely expensive.
Probably as a comparison, a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty to pay the mile overlay at Mount New this year. I don't know, that'll give you a block of downtown, three miles of of concrete roads. Yeah. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments?
Me.
Um I mean, I'll have a U L M for discussion. I kind of wanted to mention if we can maybe talk about the cleanup up there on above highway three. Since we've seen, we have a little extra money than we planned, if we've got that bid for a hundred thousand, maybe we clean that up, and then we come up with a plan to keep it clean. Keep it or have some kind of a rotating, a faster rotating, so it doesn't ever get like that again, I mean. And since we have the little extra money, it has to be cleaned at some point, um I would think we should clean it and come up with a plan to keep it clean. I I don't know, I don't know if the council.
No, I I agree with you, um I think that when people first come into town and they see that, that's a deterrent right there. We want to encourage people to come to our town and spend their money here, spend their time here, it's the entire point of, you know, the tax dollars, and then. So when we're not showing that we're doing due diligence, because that's what they see, uh why would they want to do that? So I agree, I think that's a great priority, I just drove by there this week, and with the fall, you can really see it, and it, you know, it's not good for the environment, it's not good for the water. You know, the ground itself, but we need to find a way to make it so it doesn't just keep happening, you're absolutely right. Otherwise, you know, it's just like washing the dog and let him back in the puddle, it's the same thing over and over, so, yeah.
I mean, if I thought we could do this with a with a group of, it's just too big, I mean, I've been up there, I was up there last week.
Yeah, that's a lot.
We have.
And just our property alone, I mean, we've got private property.
We've noticed the private property, one one property in contact with us, one is deceased apparently. Um so and uh in frankly, they're absentee property owners, they don't have here, um they're receiving citations, so you can't enter their property, right? Uh you have to go through the civil, the civil enforcement action. Um it's not a, it's not a criminal violation, it's a civil civil violation, so our one code enforcement officer is running back to ground right now, so. Yeah, but our our property is a concern, it takes, it takes people, it takes police and patrol to the walk up there and do that. It's not an area of presenting public works to the same alone.
Right.
So, I mean, do we have consensus to maybe have him investigate or at least to? Clean that up.
Absolutely.
I mean, it has to be done at some point in time, and.
I'm fine with that, as long as we do maintain it and don't let it reaccumulate, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I mean, definitely get that playing.
That's such a difficult area to get in and out, we can obviously get stuff out of there, we've talked about different ways to do that.
Well, Mark's got a bit already, huh?
Yeah, we'll have to go back now, let me research that, and obviously, maybe was a willing partner that may reduce that to us, but. And I think one email response and and you know, I know, no response now for the last several months, it's been that difficult to to plan on. And certainly, you know, how trains move through there and um the biohazards involved with it, uh just the sheer volume. It's, you know, it's essentially beyond our resources right now.
And I am so thankful to those who have tried to help, I think that's just amazing, yeah.
I mean, and even the property up above, even higher up, I find up there, I don't even know whose property that even is.
We got a portion, there's some kind of property attached that.
Even more than that, so, but I I think it's gonna be a good investment, and I think it'd be, maybe we can come up with a plan, try to keep it. Clean, at least go in there daily, weekly, whatever we have to do to keep it clean, or, I mean, I don't know if we could just keep people out, I mean, our police are busy.
I know.
But uh definitely not ever let it get like that again.
It's it's enforcement of that property has increased cost, just to be, just to be honest.
I I I understand that.
It is, it is most likely done uh uh when shift, shift is changing with P D. Take two P D officers, we have two or maybe three at the most on shift at any one time, we're taking two two patrol officers up in that area. Ten minutes, fifteen minutes away from their car, uh we're gonna need to backfill that in our community, that's the expectation, so.
Is that a conversation we can have with the sheriff? Maybe during shift change, they can kind of collaborate that.
Stand or. It's eight. It's after eight.
Oh. Well, if there's no other discussion.
I'll bring that, I'll bring more information.
This is adjourned at eight oh one P M.
Good night, Melissa. Thank you.
Briefings, just three, obviously with the with the holiday available tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
We have Z.
Okay.
That's it, you want it?
I'm available.
Time tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
What's 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 what?
Yeah, I'm open all.